Few minutes to head home, I'm sure you, you guys got something on TV that, that, that you care to watch. I'm, I'm quite sure. I was watching some of that stuff last night. So, uh, let's, let's do this. Okay, we're gonna begin with, for businesses. First place award goes to Marina West. Anybody hear from there?
The Marina West gift for brightest business is a $25 Visa gift card donated by Wires Inc. The town of Chesapeake Beach has donated Chesapeake Beach canvas bag, Chesapeake Beach umbrella, Chesapeake Beach, Beach, Beach koozies, 125th anniversary pens, Chesapeake Beach insulated travel mugs. Chesapeake Beach Water Park has donated four water park passes and four water park promotional passes. Thank you.
Also my favorite night of the year. Okay, um, now we'll move on to boats, okay? Best boat for the flying pig, Captain Frank Montilla.
Brightest, brightest boat award is a sign by A1 Antiques, a conductor hat donated by the Railway Museum, a $50 gift card to Ace, donated by Ace Home Center, a $25 gift card to Rollins donated by the Town of Chesapeake Beach. Also by the Town of Chesapeake Beach are Maryland blue crab coasters, an insulated town travel mug, boatloads of fun Town of Chesapeake Beach tumblers, a floatable town keychain. Thank you.
Hey, now let's get to the houses. I'm sure some of you people out there live in houses, right? I see you looking at me. Okay, I'm gonna go to honorable mention. 3244 County Court. The, how do you say that, your last name? Cost, Coster, Burley?
Yeah, we're not here.
I guess they're not here. Okay, alright. Well, we have a gift for them, we'll send it over there. That's over. Okay, uh, we'll just hold that. Third place. The McCollums, 3812 19th Street.
We have a gift of seashell wind chimes donated by A1 Antiques, a $25 Visa gift card donated by Wires Inc. Items donated from the Town of Chesapeake Beach are Chesapeake Beach Tumblr set, Chesapeake Beach pens, Maryland flag coasters, White House ornament, and a $25 Rollins gift card. Chesapeake Beach Water Park has donated two promotional water park passes. Thank you.
The positivity display is awesome. If you have a chance, go by as well. It's right off the highway here, right off, across from all, you can't miss it. Okay, second place. The Hennevers, 8326 Harrison Boulevard.
We have a reindeer candle holder, donated by A1 Antiques and seashell garlands. We have a $25 Visa gift card donated by Wires Inc., a bottle of wine donated by Rollins. The Town of Chesapeake Beach has donated insulated Chesapeake Beach mugs, a $25 gift card to Rollins, a starfish bowl, crab seasoning bowls. The Chesapeake Beach Water Park has donated two water park passes and two promotional water park passes. Thank you.
And a pair of long johns for him. Thank you very much. Alright, first place, the Chicalas, is that how we say it? Chicalla, 6918 Dunell Court.
For the first place home, we have a sign donated by A1 Antiques. We have a $50 Rod and Reel gift card donated by Rod and Reel. We have a bottle of Scotch donated by Rollins. We have a full basket donated by Pivot Physical Therapy. From the Town of Chesapeake Beach, we have crab seasoning bowls, a $50 Rollins gift card, boatloads of fun travel mugs, uh, time wasted on the bay is time well spent decorative item, a starfish dish. And from the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, we have two Chesapeake Beach Water Park passes and two Chesapeake Beach promotional passes.
Now we're gonna get to townhouses. You know, uh, um, I don't recognize the name, but there, there was a guy that used to be mayor here for eight years. Wall, is it Wall? Bruce Wall and Becky Wall from 7789 C Street.
For the brightest town home, we have a welcome to paradise sign from A1 Antiques, a porcelain collector's plate also from A1 Antiques. The Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum has donated an etched shadow box and two antique Chesapeake Beach postcards. Wires Inc. has donated a $25 Visa gift card. Mama Lucia's has donated a $50 Mama Lucia's gift card. And the Town of Chesapeake Beach has contributed a mermaid serving dish, cheese knife, $25 Rollins gift card, a Chesapeake Beach umbrella as well. Thank you.
And you check here a couple things. One, in addition to eight years as mayor, I believe 20 years on the town council, eight as vice president, but more importantly, go by his house. It's really, you know, decorated nice and there's music. I have, yeah, okay. You know, so you want to expand your house?
Sure. It's, uh, it's an animated setup and we have LED displays and we have incandescent displays. We have lots of stuff there and we're already planning for next year.
Okay, community spirit award. We've got, ah, we've got the, we've got the crowd from Hart Lane. Uh-oh. There you go. So we're gonna bring up, um, 8203, 8204, 8207, 8208, Hart Lane.
For the community spirit award, each family receives a $25 Visa gift card from Wires Inc. From the Town of Chesapeake Beach receives a Town of Chesapeake Beach canvas bag, a Town of Chesapeake Beach plush crab, Town of Chesapeake Beach license plate holders, a box of chocolates, and town tumblers. From the water park, they receive two water park passes. Thank you.
Alright. Okay. That's a cool little neighborhood down there.
She's got naked.
It's nice. Yeah. It's what we got. Alright. Go Hart Lane. Alright, and... Okay, and now, um, you guys may have heard, you know, many years ago, um, there was a woman who started going town council, sat right over there where, where Keith is, I believe. And, uh, it was her dream to have Christmas lights in Chesapeake Beach be second to none. She sponsored it to the point where the Baltimore Sun took that and added it to the front page of the Metro section and nicknamed her Mother Christmas. And we had a Mother Christmas in Chesapeake Beach for, for many decades. So, in honor of this, this woman, Barbara Jo Finch, okay? This year, the town has decided to name these awards, and in particular, the, uh, the big one, the, which is the Barbara Jo brightest beacon on the Bay Award, which is going to go to the Sheschowskis on 7488 Cavalcade Drive.
For the brightest, for the brightest beacon on the Bay Award, we have a game night bundle donated by Primetime Children's Center. We have a welcome sign donated by A1 Antiques, a $25 Visa gift card from Wires Inc., a $50 SPA gift card from Rod and Reel from the Town of Chesapeake Beach, a Santa Stop and Maryland First dish towel, a $50 Rollins gift card, boatloads of fun travel mug from the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, two Chesapeake Beach Water Park passes and two Chesapeake Beach Water Park promotional passes.
Alright, thank you very much. Before y'all go. Oh, we, ugliest sweater in the town of Chesapeake Beach. There's a big tie for ugliest guy. We won't mention those guys. You know, but, uh, we, before I let you all go, we have a few minutes before we get into a public hearing. I just wanna, you know, thank each and every one of you for participating in this event. The Christmas lights, everything that, that we do around the holidays, you know, be it the, you know, the lights and the, you know, Santa Claus and the, the kids from beach school who come in here and they, you know, play for us and, you know, sing for us and that little guy out there waving hi. And, uh, um, you know, it's what makes us so special and it's what makes people who don't live here wish that they did live here. So for that, we have you all to, to, to thank, and I would just, on behalf of BG&E, I would ask that you continue to participate, you know, in the event. And it's great because your house has made Christmas even more special for all the families and, and kids we're having that are, you know, driving around. So, thank you again. Uh, we're gonna take a break, let you all, you know, head, head back with the, with the posse. And, um, Merry Christmas to all. I, I think the council may, let me let the council, you know, quickly give you a, a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and thank you for coming.
We bring people from out of town to see your lights. Merry Christmas.
Thank you all for making our town the showcase of the whole area. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, anybody that decorates the, with the lights and things, it's a great community spirit and it really spreads goodwill. It's just a great thing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for decorating. I really enjoy driving around town and seeing all the lights that you have put up and have a Merry Christmas.
And I'm a little partial, but come through Chesapeake Village. Um, you've seen a few, few of our folks honored tonight. So we've got some great decorations in there. So I encourage everyone to come out and see us as well. Congratulations to both of you guys.
Have a good night, everybody. We're gonna take a break.
It was good.
Yeah, 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 I felt like I did the Chris, don't set me back. I'm finally kinda getting there. I had to watch a couple of Christmas movies the other night. I know, this is one of those shirts that I should, I should throw away because it's old.
No, it's very Christmas.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Oh, yeah, it's not that. Oh, I thought since we knew, we had, uh, well, I see it was already introduced. Right, right. Yeah, like the interlineation. Oh, you said there were so many. Red everywhere. It didn't look that bad to me. Pardon me?
I said so many.
Who are people or something. Oh, it came to me. Like, I just, that's just how I read it. Like, oh, there are lots. You spent a lot of time on this.
There is a, among all the fantastic lights, there is a rainbow. Am I wrong in looking at that fissure and wondering if the polarity is switched? And the lights are running in the long dark vision?
Oh, so here's the real deal. It's actually being walked. So the, in the front pocket, silver, it's orange and the back one, it's actually purple. Always, yes, that, exactly. You look at it, it's blue balls.
You did always wonder about the color.
Yep. It's actually not. I've, I've heard it before then because I've seen it before. Whether it's not purposely or accidentally, you turn the fade, you change this way, you change that way, three steps. I've seen it.
So the person could actually walk there.
They knew.
I'm sure it's, it's a season progressing.
One could sneak out, dude. Could sneak out to me.
Years past is a little bit easier. It's a little bit harder. Well, we got it to where it's in a box and you know it. But if you knew what you were doing and really wanted to do it, every now and then, people don't notice it. You know what I mean? Because I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure in some college, the world predicts the...
That's pretty good, Travis. I can remember where I hit start.
Yeah.
So it's not that, but yeah. And I'll be like, oh yeah, I forgot last night.
Yeah.
How are you? Is that any season going?
Alright. We can begin now. We got 6:50. We can go. We're gonna get things rolling here. Alright. Okay, we're, oops. We have some public hearings. First is a public hearing for ordinance O-19-15. It's ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach repealing in its entirety and reenacting Chapter 25 Ethics Public of the Chesapeake Beach Code to comply with Maryland Code. Anointed, is that anointed or annotated? Annotated, uh, general provisions article, Title V, and to meet the town's need for ethical and efficient government and matters generally relating to public ethics for officials, appointees, and officials of, of the town. Is there, um, anybody in the audience that wishes to say something about this ordinance? I will declare that when we get to this, the, the part of the meeting, I'm going to, um, ask the Town Council to, to table this and I'll explain that later in the meeting. So hearing none, um, I'll move on to ordinance O-19-16. It's ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the Chapter 22 Elections of the Town Code to reflect changes over time in various election practices, including voting technologies and to resolve certain ambiguities and inconsistencies. Did he close that one? Okay. Is there a motion to close the first public hearing? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Thank you. Really got that first mistake out of the way early. Okay, uh, so is there anybody in the audience that cares to comment on ordinance O-19-16? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Next, Charter Amendment Resolution CAR 19-2. A resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the Charter of the Town of Chesapeake Beach as the single subject elections to promote the most efficient conduct and administration of town elections and eliminate certain ambiguities in certain provisions with respect to the, the conduct of elections and the canvassing of ballots. Uh, does anybody in the audience care to come forward with a comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? No moved. Your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? We'll need to wait till seven o'clock before we start the meeting. We can resume making noise. The, thank you. How'd that work out for you, did you? There at, at Pindell? Oh, okay. That's very nice. It's flat when you got there. About as safe as a flat as you can have. And nothing like the coldest day of the winter, if you will, so far, and getting off the bus. With a night here ahead of you, which is already, you're, you know, yeah, you're, yeah. Really not your favorite night in, in December and, uh...
Because so much rides on your times.
Oh, well. Fortunately, you already bought our Christmas presents, so we're, we're good to go. Yeah. You're looking to take them back, huh? Save the receipts? What we got here? How you doing, John? Now I know why you strike interested. A shirt, ugly sweater, events around, around the beach, they're all over the place, everybody. Ready to bunch your money. Like, there's so many, I keep thinking, I gotta buy one of them darn things so I can get the door at all these, all these fun times, you know? Surely can't borrow any of yours. That's not an ugly one. Buying to come in last place is what he's doing. I would, you know, borrow one, Larry, but, but, but then I, I will win the ugliest, ugliest tent contest. Alright, so, okey doke. Okay, we have seven o'clock, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we'll begin the, uh, December 19th Town Council Meeting. Traditionally, this is one of the best meetings that we have every year. We started out well and traditionally, this is also one of the shortest meetings we have every year. So being a man of tradition, I, I hope things stay that way. Let me, yeah, yeah. Council's already making motions. The, um, let the record read that the entire council and mayor are present. If you would, this being our last meeting of the year, I'm gonna ask the, the council to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. There a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Uh, at this time, Wes, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on. Approval of the, the minutes of the November 21st Town Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Approval of the, the minutes of the December 9th Work Session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? And approval of the minutes of the December 9th Closed Session. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Thank you. Next, we'll begin with the, uh, the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. You've all seen the, the report. If the council has any questions, we can send them to Larry. He can take them back. Deputies' report. We've read the deputies' report. Does anyone, anybody in the council have questions? Sure.
Sergeant. Good evening. There was a rea, another vehicle theft in Richfield Station recently. Any update on that at all?
I don't know.
That you can speak to?
I don't think the vehicle's been recovered yet. Um, I know that the update on it was, uh, in the vehicle, they had two vehicles in their driveway, both of them were left unlocked. One of the, the car had a key fob to the truck in it that, and the truck was ended up stolen. I have not seen any reports saying the vehicle's been recovered, um, yet.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that. Um, I'm sorry if I'm not going to.
No, go ahead.
Not the entire vehicle, but up at, up C Street, and I don't know if all these people have reported on them, so I'm actually curious about that. Two in Seagate and then... Two in Seagate and then two additional stops heading north on Se Street. Vehicle break-ins, not smashing grabs. I think the vehicles may have been open, I don't know, but, so I didn't know if you were aware of those and if that's a trend you're seeing.
There's been several in not only Chesapeake Beach but North Beach, and it goes back to lock your vehicles. We can patrol, but they're on foot, they see headlights, they're gonna duck behind a car, unless someone sees them. We've got some video from the Ring Doorbell Systems and other surveillance systems off the houses. It's usually at night, so the video's not that great. As always, it goes back to lock your car. I can't guarantee they're not gonna smash your window, but I've been doing this job for 20, so 24 years now, and I've taken one report over the 24 years for actually smashed window, and it was because they had a laptop and a purse on the front seat. Number one, number two, it's hard to break a car window. It's not, I mean, you could take a hammer sometimes to them and they won't break. So, and it makes too much noise. So, lock your cars and they're not gonna break. It's a crime opportunity to walk down the street pulling a hammer.
I was just gonna say, you know, from the city, we have learned to keep our cars empty and clear. You're saying here, you don't really see evidence of that smash and grab technique, really, it's open doors and...
You know, I'm not saying it won't happen. Don't leave, you know, valuables visible on your front seat because they might smash your window. But I've not taken a report for a smashed window in probably 15 years. The last one I took, you know, was because they had something of value on the front seat. But, I mean, not saying it won't happen, but don't leave valuables on your front seat and lock your cars, and they're not gonna take the chance that, you know, to break a window for nothing. So, but...
Yeah, I think that's a message that we need to get out, is basically lock your vehicle and, you know, hide your valuables. It's, you know, it's... Having grown up in the city, I think I was born knowing that, it was in my DNA, but yeah, it's... Thank you. Have you, have we had any instances or many of porch pirates?
I have not seen a report this year on it.
Wonderful, then we'll keep that on the down low. Yeah, we'll just get everybody locked their cars, okay? Well, yes, sir.
So, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but at some time when it's appropriate, could we get an update on the, especially the new speed camera, or how effective those two cameras are in the area of the school, and in particular, the new one? But when it's appropriate, I know it's not a question or an answer I want tonight, but if we could, that'd be great.
Well, we appreciate all you do protecting us like this. And have a Merry Christmas and a good time. And the guys that have to work over the holidays, give them our best. Okay, Public Works Report, we've read Jay's report, do we have any questions for Jay? Hearing none. Code Enforcement Report, we've read Connie's report, we have any questions for Connie? Mr. Morris?
Um, hi Connie. Sorry to make you get up, I was just wondering, I know that the property, the Harbor House property changed ownership. I thought...
It hasn't changed ownership yet.
Yet, I guess, what's this update on this porch?
We have a court date scheduled for January the 7th.
Oh, okay. They still planning on, I thought that the address for that complex was...
They're still, they're still negotiating.
Negotiations, okay, thanks.
Is that it?
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
Town Attorney's Report, we've read Paul's report. Paul's not present, but if we have any questions, we can direct them to Holly and she'll follow up with Paul for the council. Water Park Report, we've read Marilyn's report. Do we have any questions of Marilyn?
I just want to say that the lights, I know you do it every year, but for whatever reason, I was driving by there the other day and I just love the lights on the slide.
That would be fine, Jay, I can't take any credit for that at all, but thank you, it does look pretty, I thought.
Did it climb up there to put those up, or how'd you do that?
He's not here.
It looks great, thank you.
Yeah, it does look nice. A lot of people have said that, also.
Thank you, Marilyn. Merry Christmas. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Report, we've read John's report, do we have any questions of John?
One question.
Sure. John, any update on Blue Earth's work?
Well, we're still in the process of doing it. We started Tuesday on the treatment of the different chemicals and letting it sit, and we started backwashing. Yesterday, we were finishing backwashing today, and then we took some samples. So, they're gonna analyze that and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you, John. Town Treasurer's Report, Dale isn't present, we've read his report, if we have any questions, Holly can get you an answer?
Just real quick, do...
Sure, go ahead.
The five expense line over budget, do we know which budgets those are from? Just offhand, we can wait, but just curious if you knew.
Yes, I was the first one to treat this one.
No, the FY19 over expenditures, in the middle, in the middle. Yeah, I was just curious which budget, if we knew what, general, okay.
Okay, thank you. Next, Town Ministers' Report, anything that sticks out that you want to share?
Just other than our new website, we're getting a lot of activity from mobile devices, increased activity and viewing of the site, so we're glad to see that and we'll continue to keep posting new information there for the public.
Question? Any updates, excuse me, any updates on the Kellums Field acquisition?
About 60 days, so we're at least another 45, I think, from that transfer.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor's Report. The town looks spectacular. I really wanna, you know, I can't help but to say that, it just looks great, you know, and this year with the bridge and everything all lit up, it's even better. You guys really do a great job. It dawned on me a little while ago that this is the, this is the fourth Christmas of this mayor and council, and well, it not only shows you that time flies, but I definitely want to, you know, say that we've accomplished so much and we will continue to accomplish even more. In this realm, as mayor, I want to give a special thanks to the Town Council for their dedication and dignity, for working together so well as colleagues. The end result to that is a better town, so thank you, council. Thank you, Valerie. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Larry, and your sweater. Mr. Morris, Mr. Keith, thank you, Derek. Appreciate that. Our staff for their efficiency, productivity, and selflessness. Not just those who are present always at these meetings, but the men and women who work nights at the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant. Public Works outside in the weather, protecting our infrastructure. Those that work at our water park and beach that make our town so special for our visitors. Our contractors who work so hard to serve our town, you'll represent them this evening. Thank you. Those who protect us 24/7, even while we sleep, that would be the Twin Beach deputies and the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. So, thanks to those men and women, we rest easy in this town and we're safe because our biggest problem seems to be getting people to lock their cars. They grew up in the city, they never had that problem, and they're in their DNA. And lastly, and most importantly, I want to thank the citizens who work hard, raise families, pay taxes, and support us through their volunteerism, encouragement, and participation. You put all these ingredients into a bowl of Christmas soup and you have the great town of Chesapeake Beach. So, I just want to say to everybody in this room and everybody in this entire town how happy I am. Merry Christmas and have a safe and happy new year to all. That's, that's a lengthy report for the mayor. Okay, you'll get one next year. Okay, Vote on Ordinance O-19-15. An ordinance of the Town of Chesapeake Beach repealing in its entirety and reenacting Chapter 25 Ethics Public of the Chesapeake Beach Code to comply with Maryland Annotated Code, General Provisions Article Title Five, and to meet the town's needs for ethical and efficient government and matters generally relating to public ethics for officials, appointees, and officials of the town. In a second, I'm going to ask the council to table this, and the reason being is that the Chair of the Ethics Board, after we introduced this in November, the board found numerous editorial changes. It would have probably taken 13 different motions to make those and and or and spell filed file and, you know, that kind of stuff, and I, staff and I decided that it would be a whole lot easier if we just table this and we'll, we'll discuss some of the changes in the January work session, and then we'll introduce a new ordinance in January. I do want to say, I got a special thank you from Sharon who doesn't have to file those 13 motions that would have been made and keep track, so she was most grateful. So, having said that, is there a motion from the council?
No moved.
Was that a motion to table? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Thank you, council. Next, we have a vote on ordinance O-19-16. An ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland amending the Chapter 22 Elections of the Town Code to reflect changes over time in various election practices, including voting technologies, and to resolve certain ambiguities and inconsistencies. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I was looking over there. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Thank you. Vote on Charter Amendment Resolution CAR 19-2. A resolution to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the Charter of the Town of Chesapeake Beach as to the single subject elections to promote the most efficient conduct and administration of town elections and eliminate certain ambiguities in certain provisions with respect to the conduct of elections and the canvassing of ballots. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Okay, and at this time, I'm going to introduce, introduce ordinance O-19-17. An ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland amending Chapter 196 Parks and Public Areas, Article 1. Regulations concerning all public parks, public venues, and restricted property to enact Section 196-9.1. Smoking on town property to prohibit smoking on specified town property and to provide a sanction for a violation of Section 196-9.1. I'm going to set a public hearing for the first Thursday in January, is that the 16th? I'm going by...
Yes.
It is? Third Thursday, the 16th, at 6:55. And for the record, that no smoking does include vaping. Introduce ordinance O-19-18. An ordinance to Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting a revised water and store policy manual. I'll set the public hearing for January 16th at 6:56. Thank you. Planning and zoning, there was a meeting held on December 11th. I will, I do know that, for those who don't know, that the Chairman of Planning and Zoning, Jeff Foltz, has resigned. He served five years on the board, the last couple as Chair. The board will be, they'll be selecting a new chair and we'll probably be filling that spot, you know, very soon as well. So, that's, Jeff gave great service to the town. His just, his job is just, he's hard to get a hold of, he's really working hard, and of course, he has a family and stuff like that, so I just wanted to let the council know that, but we will move forward with a new member and a new chair. Board of Appeals, no hearing was held. Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society, our own John Bacon.
Two items. The first one is, the community mural paintings will be on the 25th and 26th of January at the Northeast Community Center. Mural 3 is 3.0, will have three different murals painted by students from Beach and all of a sudden from Windy Hill. So, it's gonna be an expensive, expansive and expensive day for everything. More importantly is, on behalf of the 100-plus members of Sebox, the many thousands of students that went through the oyster program on the Chesapeake Beach Railway Trail for the last eight years, and the plus or minus one or two 860,000 oysters that are sitting out in Chesapeake Bay, trying to clean it up as best they can, and you saw one of those oysters at the last meeting. I would like to thank the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach for their initial support and continuing support of the Sebox organization, which will turn nine years old next month. It has been one heck of a ride and it continues to be a heck of a ride, and I would really like to thank the people who decorated the front of the town hall with an oyster reef and for the last two years, because this really does show the commitment of this town to oyster rec, to oyster recovery in the bay. Thank you very much from Sebox and have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, John. I think the entire town give John a Merry Christmas. And John, give Marilyn our best, too.
Oh, I want to thank you from Marilyn for having Sebox because it keeps you out of her hair.
Actually, she thanks us. That's called a win-win in the real world, right? Thank you, John. Economic Development Councilman Jaworski?
Two things. I'm a member of the Calver County Economic Development Advisory Commission, and we had a meeting, I guess it was just last week. The interesting part of the meeting, though, was the location, and it was at the Calver Cliffs Nuclear Plant. If you've never had a chance to go there, you really ought to. It's a very impressive facility. The security is just iron-tight. I mean, I had to go through about four different security checks to get into the center part of the facility, so it's a very well-operated, very well-maintained facility and very interesting. The only other thing I'll add is, as a member of the County Economic Development Advisory Commission, I was just reappointed to another three-year term on the EDAC, so...
Yay!
Thank you.
Be careful what you volunteer for, right?
Larry, I was just curious, was that Ford Gates before they stopped you, or...
Well, the real funny thing is, so they've got this tight security and it's got the concert Tina wire and the fences and everything else, and as a teenage kid that grew up in Chicago, it gave me a really bad feeling to be inside this thing. It was like a flashback to...
Christmas visit to your family members?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that crossed everybody's mind, Larry.
I wasn't happy going through the security, I was happy when they let me out.
Thank you, Larry. Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition?
Keith Parton? Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, we had a meeting on Tuesday, December 10th, 6:00 p.m. here. Just a few of the highlights from that. We are planning to hold a health fair. Right now, the tentative date is March 1st. We are working to get partners to do that and find a venue. We're hoping North Beach Volunteer Fire Department might have an opening for us and be willing to partner with us in terms of a venue. I think Ashley Staples from the Calver County Health Department is doing the planning, leading the planning on this, so hopefully she...
Let me know if I can help.
All right, thank you. And, let's see... let's see. We also discussed hosting an annual Substance Abuse Awareness 5K here in Chesapeake Beach, the Calvert County Health Department did one last spring and it was very successful and a lot of people participated, but they moved theirs around the county, so it won't be here this year. And so we're, you know, we're interested, it's just we don't have enough bandwidth and volunteers in our group to make it happen, so if there's anybody out there that likes to plan 5Ks and wants to work with us, we'd love to hear from you. Upcoming events, the mayor and our committee has invited Dr. Drew Fuller, the Director of the Calvert County Mobile Crisis Unit to give a 15-minute presentation on the opioid crisis in Calvert County and their new mobile crisis unit at our next town council meeting in January, so I hope you can come and hear that. He, I had spoke, when I spoke to him, he also mentioned now that the Calvert County Hospital does offer buprenorphine if someone comes to their emergency room presenting signs of addiction withdrawal, at least from opioids. They weren't doing that for the longest time, they were trying to connect them with Calvert County Health Department Services and so that left this window of where somebody's really suffering from cravings and they couldn't get any kind of treatment from the hospital and so they were much more likely to, to, you know, walk out the door and try to get, get what they needed and, and then potentially overdose, so this is a great thing that they're now, you know, prescribing them this buprenorphine which gets rid of the cravings, helps them feel normal without overdosing and then they can connect them with the resources hopefully to continue treatment outside with a private provider or within the, the health department. Alford Alliance Against Substance Abuse is hosting a few events, January 28th, they have a Let's Talk, How Do I Start a Support Group? At the Calvert Library on January 28th, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Learn the ins and outs of starting a support group and what it takes to keep one going. Then on February 11th, Let's Talk Mental Health in Your Teen, What's the Connection to Substance Misuse? And that's also at the Calvert Library in Prince Frederick, 6 to 8:00 PM. And finally, we, there will be a Drug Takeback Day in April, the date to be decided yet. And so that'll be at various locations throughout the county and they are now accepting vaping devices with the batteries removed and cartridges if you want to get those out of your house. And I think, let me just check my notes here, see if I got everything, and I think with that, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you Keith. Welcome, Community Advisory Group.
All right, so our planning firm continues to work on their deliverables following the meeting we had with them in November. There was nothing new from them at this time, so we did not have a December meeting. And just also to note that there are a couple of public participation events in the new year, so look for notices on that as well. And they're, they're due to wrap up their work in the May timeframe, so there'll be a couple of public events here, leading up to that.
Thank you sir. Okay, no unfinished business, new business, Town Council to reappoint Randy Getman to the Board of Elections.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service sir and Merry Christmas. Town Council to appoint Dominique Soroka to the Board of Elections.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Council to appoint Margaret Hartman to the Board of Elections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I have an addition in here that I forgot to put on the thing, Town Council to appoint Randy Getman Chairman of the Board of Elections.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Stuck again Randy. Thank you for your service sir. Okay, Town Council to approve 17,000 for asphalt overlay from the capital expenditures line item.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Always a good one here, Town Council to approve a contract to Schaefer Fireworks Company for the 2020 fireworks display in the amount of 45,000 from the FY 20 Special Events Line Item with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Town Council to consider canceling the August 2020 council meeting for summer break. Your motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
We discuss it?
Discussion, discussion.
I didn't hear, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking, yes, yes ma'am.
Yeah. Once again, I'm going to be voting no on this, I don't believe that we should be, in essence, taking a month off in some ways, giving ourselves a, a raise because of instead of doing a salary for 12 months, you're doing a salary for 11 months. But I just think that we have a few opportunities to get together, we have 12 work sessions and 12 meetings and I just don't, I don't think it's right to, to grant ourselves time off. I just don't agree.
And I respect your opinion and, and as, as we, you know, discussed and stated last year, the, the, we, we definitely had the option to hold a special meeting at any time if it is recalled and the, I can tell you that, that the staff really appreciated the break. I heard it, you know, many times, I don't think we need to hear from them again, we heard it all last year, but, and doing this now gives them the opportunity to book their vacations for their families, so, but anyhow, I do appreciate your opinion, sir.
I'm going to be voting no this year as well on this, I appreciate the sentiment and the time off. I believe the charter requires the monthly meeting, but I also felt over this past summer, I felt that there was a hiccup in progress a little bit, nothing super major, but just enough to make me feel that I'd like to see the council meeting in August next year, and we could skip the work session maybe. Thank you.
I don't remember a hiccup at all, I appreciate your opinion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's a tie, I vote yes. You guys win. Okay. Town Council, okay, at this point in time, we ask for a public comment, anybody in the audience have any public comment? Here we go, we'll have a lightning round. Sir. You've never been shy to comment.
Randy Getman, 3248, Ida Chase. I guess what I really want to say is, is that the way you have acted in the last three plus years has been wonderful for the town. The fact that you've held the work sessions and you do all your, you, you, you do your homework, you hold your work session and then you come here and, and you approve, so I thank you for your dedication.
Thanks for your kind words sir, what keeps us going sometimes. Council Lightning Round, Madam Vice President.
I would just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, enjoy the season, enjoy your family, enjoy your friends and have a Happy New Year.
I just want to say one thing about the break-ins that we were talking about, not to harp on this, but I'm certainly going to notify folks in my HOA and my friends and neighbors to block their doors, I don't think that's a bad thing and I'm wondering if we would consider adding it to our town announcements, I don't want to make it a, like a negative thing that we're putting in the town announcements because everything in there is typically yay us, but I think it's worth, worth a reminder to lock your doors, I, I wouldn't mind seeing that. Other than that, Merry Christmas.
I wanted to share the mayor's earlier sentiments congratulating us on the start of our fourth year together, we've seemed to have been playing pretty well together for three years and I hope that holds for the fourth. And I just wanted to wish Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa and whatever other holiday you may be celebrating and Happy New Year.
And Festivus for the rest of us, right? Merry Christmas.
I'd like to thank the mayor for expediting the smoking ban ordinance. We'd had the discussion about it earlier in the year, I was happy to see that advanced. The brightest, the brightest beacon contest that I don't know how many years you all have been doing that, as long as I can remember, it seems like ever since I've been in town, you all have been doing it, but may not have been that long. I just think that's a great program, just to, for all to enjoy fosters the goodwill, like I mentioned earlier, promotes a sense of well-being for everybody that's around them. I wanted to thank town hall staff, passionate present, who've helped to drive that contest because that's, they take some time out to do those things, it takes time to. He wants to talk to you about something. No, that's okay. The, yeah, anyway, I know Connie, I don't know if Connie's still involved in that, I know she had a lot to do with it earlier on, Marty and whoever else, and it is not recognized, that's just a great program for this town, it's great for the fabric of this town. And on that, with the town lights and everything and to coin the, the phrase the mayor used earlier to this evening, enjoy that soup. Hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season and be safe and we'll be getting back at it again real soon, I'm sure, thank you.
Thank you all for coming out, I also wanted to thank all the members of the Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee and all the hard work they've done this past year and I would like you all to just to stay safe and happy holidays.
This past Sunday, I had the honor to present the town proclamation that we all signed to Ian Coker, who's a 14-year-old boy at Chesapeake Beach who made Eagle Scout at 14, which is a huge accomplishment, so I, I enjoyed taking part in their ceremony and, and former Commissioner, Pat Nutter was there as well to represent the commissioner, so it was a great event and again, I appreciate the opportunity to, to take part in that, represent all of us. It's also, it's been said a couple of times, but I think, I think it's maybe my opportunity, you know, three years ago I said we had 47 more meetings left. Now we're, we have no more than 11, so I look forward to working with you guys this next year and the staff, we have great staff. We've got great volunteers, looking forward to that time together. And Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody, thanks.
Before we leave, I want to announce the winner of the ugly sweater contest and ask Larry to say a few words.
Thank you. I have one that's even worse than this, if you saw me in the parade, that, that, that one's even worse than this, so, but I did just want to add Saturday will be the Railway Museum's Holiday Lights Tour Trolley. Four different tours, completely sold out within just a few hours after it opened up and I understand from talking to the staff over there, there's a waiting list of like 400 people for this tour, so if you've ever, never done this, you really ought to try it next year. It's fascinating just to drive around town and see all the lights everywhere, so, thank you mayor.
All right, so motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it, good night everybody, thank you council. Tradition was upheld, tradition was upheld. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the card Greg.